Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 1st meeting of the Portland City Council. Would you please call the roll?
Novick?
Here.
Prince?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Saltzman?
Hales?
Here. Good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin our work, we need to take a pause. It may be not all that unusual, or God help us even, all that remarkable, or all that remarkable, that there's been another tragic school shooting in our state and in our country. But there has been, and there's been terrible loss of life in Roseburg today at Umpqua Community College. So I would like us to take a moment and send our prayers to the families of the students and faculty of Umpqua Community College, to Mayor Larry Rich, City of Roseburg, whom I called, and all else, all others in that community who are grieving, because we need to grieve with them and give them help. We have sent firefighters, TIP Trauma Intervention Program volunteers, and other resources to Roseburg to assist in this, but I think we should all take a moment and grieve. We have two very important pieces of business before us this afternoon on the same subject, which is the World Indoor Track and Field Event.
Sorry, before we start those, we need to elect the new president of the council.
No, it's the turn of the clock. I thought it was...
October 1st.
I thought we did it at the middle of the year, not at the quarter end.
I'm sorry, the, yeah, the president of the, I'm sorry, the voting orders, right?
Quarterly, it's semiannually.
Sorry, I was thinking voting order.
The voting order is different, yeah. You cannot take my president.
We're not deposing.
Nice try. Hopefully, we slip that in, but okay.
We're stuck with her for another three months.
You are, indeed.
All right. Would you go ahead and read both items, please, and then we'll take them in order.
1007. Authorize a grant agreement with Track Town Events LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,930,459 in sponsorship of the International Association of Athletics Federations 2016 World Indoor Track and Field Championships.
Thank you. Well, this is pursuant to the council's decision in our budget to approve $1.93 million in special appropriations for this amazing opportunity that we as a community have, and we as a state, because this is going to be a big deal for the Northwest as well as for us as a city. The ordinance in front of us implements that grant agreement between the city and Track Town USA. It needs to be an emergency ordinance because the funds are needed to get to work on implementation of the event. Of course, a great deal of work is already underway, and you'll hear about that. So I want to ask Susan Gibson Hartnett to come up and walk us through the grant agreement, and after that, or she, he can come with you, Vin Lanana from Track Town USA. Come on up, Vin. Good afternoon.
I think Sasha's coming up also.
Sasha's coming up as well? Okay, great. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Susan Hartnett with the Office of Management and Finance, and I would like to say I'm very excited to be here and helping the council follow through on this and working with Doug Obletzon, Vin, on this very exciting event. Item 1007 is an emergency ordinance that does approve a grant agreement between the city and Track Town Events LLC, and they do business as Track Town USA. The grant agreement will implement a special authorization, or a special appropriation that the council approved earlier this year as part of the budget process, and provides $1,930,459 in support of the International Association of Athletics Federation 2016 World Indoor Track and Field Championships, which is quite a mouthful. We are typically just calling that Portland 2016, because it's a much quicker way of getting there. As a key sponsor for this event, the city will benefit from this agreement through significant sponsor recognition for the event. This will include things like international broadcast of the event, as well as a major activation that will be occurring at Pioneer Courthouse Square during the event itself. The agreement clarifies the activities and costs that these funds will be used for, as well as the mundane things like payment processes, reporting processes, and some other requirements, such as the city's insurance requirements. Through the agreement, the funds are going to be allocated between Track Town Events activities and the services that will be provided by two city bureaus, the Portland Bureau of Transportation and the Portland Police Bureau. The grant agreement also acknowledges that there are some budget adjustments that we'll be making through our annual budget monitoring processes to make sure that those dollars get allocated between Track Town and the city bureaus appropriately. The agreement also defines the implementation responsibilities for the city bureaus, which include the public agency security for the event, which the police bureau will be heading up, and transportation will be helping manage the transportation aspects of the event. Track Town will be using the city's grant funds for a variety of activities. Chief among those will be participant safety, crowd management, and accreditation services, which is significant for an international event of this type. There's a whole variety of youth engagement activities that they will be performing, and the second ordinance you'll be talking about has a piece of that involved in it. Construction and maintenance of the countdown clock at Pioneer Courthouse Square, which is already up and running and ticking down the days as we are sitting here. Implementation of a multi-day activation at Pioneer Courthouse Square, and traffic management activities throughout the course of the event, including opening ceremonies, which will take the focus from Pioneer Courthouse Square over to the Moda Center for the first series of event, which is the pole vault championship. And then also meddling ceremonies, which will connect the Oregon Convention Center back to Pioneer Courthouse Square for the awarding of medals to the winners. I'm available to answer any questions about the agreement if you have any, but I'd like to right now turn it over to Track Town USA President and the USA Olympic Team Coach, Vin Lanana, who's going to give you an overview of where we're at on planning and marketing activities for the event.
Great. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the commissioners for all of your unwavering support on this great event. I'd also like to thank the mayor and commissioners' staff, Josh Albert, Diana Nunez, Jim Blackwood, for their work in bringing these two actions to council. The planning for 2016 is well underway. It's actually progressing at a frivish pace. We are heavily engaged in the design of the world championship stadium that will be inside the OCC, the design of the activation of Pioneer Square, and the planning for the men's and women's world championship pole vault competition, and the opening ceremonies that will be held in the Moda Center, which will be held on, the opening night, on March 17th. Sasha Spencer Atwood and I would like to take a few minutes to present an update on the planning for Portland 2016. As I mentioned, the event planning is in full swing. We've had great progress being made with the city staff and the transportation people and the security people. The design for the world championship stadium at OCC is 50 percent at its completion. The program and design for Pioneer Square activation is well underway. The pole vault festival is rolling, and it looks like it's going to be a fantastic event. Our marketing presence is increasing on a daily basis, and we're just over 50 percent on ticket sales already. We, to give you an idea of the schedule, we will have the U.S. Nationals, which will be a lead-up, and that'll be the weekend before, March 11th to 12th. March 16th, we'll open up Pioneer Courthouse Square. 17th, the pole vault. And 17th is going to be pretty exciting, because it'll also have a youth component to it as well, for kids from around the, around the entire Northwest. On the 18th, 19th, and 20th will be the actual world championships. Two sessions on the 18th, two sessions on the 19th, which will be Saturday, and one session, all finals, on Sunday. So, things that we are focusing on right now, believe it or not, the actual construction of the track will begin as soon as this Monday, the 5th. We have the cityscape branding is already going on. We'll have Wallscape. We will have, the TriMet Max Trains will be branded and wrapped, and by December 1st, we'll submit permanent drawings for the world championships, for the world championship stadium. In January, we'll have a 60-day-out celebration at the Moda Center. We will have the street banners up in February, and then we will begin the actual construct, where we'll actually move the track to the convention center at the end of February. So, little bit about the world championship track. We have a, we have a 3D show to show you a little bit about what it'll actually look For those of you who have a hard time imagining what the Oregon Convention Center, how it actually will accommodate it, this will give you a sense of what's going to be going on in that convention center with all those seats all around it. And we're at the finish line.
And is that how the ceiling normally looks, or are we taking out the panels?
The ceiling normally looks like that. The, as you can see, that this will actually be the way the convention center looks. It'll be a, there's not a bad seat in the house. It'll have a real intimate setting. If you look at it closely, you can see if you're sitting, and we hope that all members of, all the commissioners and the mayor and group will be able to attend the meet. Just if you're sitting in those first couple of, first couple of rows, you may actually feel a sweat bead that comes off the athletes as they're competing, because they're really great, great seats. So, the entire build will be 7,000 seats. That's pretty much what it'll look like from a rendering perspective. It'll be a great, it'll be an absolutely great event. We have lots of things going on inside the city, and I'm going to ask Sasha Spencer Atwood to kind of give you a little update on that.
What's the total cost of the conversion?
Of the... Of the construction and conversion of that space?
It's hard to really tell at this point. We're still kind of working out the details for it. The actual track itself, we're renting it, so it'll be built here. It'll be built starting on October 5th, and exactly what the cost is, not sure, not sure at this point.
So when we're looking at this award, you're not going to be coming back to ask us for more?
No, no. Everything fits into the budget that we have.
And does the budget include putting it back to normal?
It does, it does.
And what's the estimated date when it'll be back in use as the convention center?
The convention center, we expect it'll take us about a week and a half to take the, to take the track down and be able to transport it back, and I think it's going at that point to Iowa.
And the renting of the convention center includes the amount of time it takes to take the track down again?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
What happens to all the bleachers, the seating?
Good question. The bleachers will be built by a company called, probably called T&amp;B, and they are, they have built many of the other temporary stadiums around for golf courses, et cetera. They, it's all temporary. They take it down, and they bring it to the next place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As we discussed previously, we are using Pioneer Courthouse Square as our live activation site. It'll be open to the public the entire time during the competition. We're exploring the idea of covering the square. We are, we are playing with it. The weather in March, as we know, can be unpredictable, but we also like the welcoming feeling that, that you get when you don't have a space covered, so we're weighing the pros and cons of that. This is the view from Sixth Avenue. There'll be a stage hosting live entertainment, local and, and national acts. We're also looking into different community organizations who would want to program something on the stage there. And of course, we're considering all of the options and possibilities of, of different parties and evening activities that can take place in Pioneer Courthouse Square. One of the most exciting and innovative things that we're bringing to this championships as a local organizing committee is the opportunity to host the meddling ceremonies outside of the competition. Pioneer Courthouse Square would be our meddling plaza. As you can see, we have the kind of fountain area there turned into actual podium medal stands. We will crown 26 world champions at, at the World Indoor Championships, and this will be a great place right in the heart of the community to do so. Also down in Pioneer Courthouse Square, as you'll remember, on May 27th during the unveiling, is the countdown clock. Portlanders and people from all over the world really have taken to the clock and, and posed in the blocks, some standing next to the clock, and sent this image out into, onto different social media platforms. The hashtag Portland 2016 is the official event hashtag, and so whenever somebody either uses that or takes a picture next to this, the countdown clock as the activation site, it goes out all across the worldwide web, so we're getting a lot of reach with that. We, we get a lot of, a lot of reach from the countdown clock, but we have perhaps gotten no more reach than, than the promotion and branding that we received at the outdoor world championships in Beijing this past August. The brand was featured prominently in the stadium, and these digital boards appeared in several places around the stadium, but the location that was perhaps the most visible, the one that millions and millions of people across the globe saw on the live feed, was the one just past the finish line. So let's take a look.
We're a household word in, in...
All over the world, all over the world. There's also promotional activation in the exhibitors' area, what we call the Market Street area, where fans, officials, and sponsors can come to learn more detail about the beautiful city of Portland and about the competition that's coming here. We have another video of a U.S. athlete celebrating in front of one of our boards. The IAAF has been a great partner in, in continuing to promote the event as one of their marquee events, and we're looking forward to working with them as we get closer and closer. Speaking of marketing initiatives, we're doing several things out and around town to make sure that Portlanders from all different walks of life know that, know that this event is coming and get excited about it. Our grassroots activations have included high school cross-country meets, community events, and running events. In October, we'll be rolling out some city, cityscape branding, the Wallscape, wrapping some of the TriMet buses, and we'll also launch some promotional videos on websites on different platforms. So you can see here are some of the Track Town activations. You know, the youth are really one of our biggest targets here. We think that there's this great benefit for this event for them, and so we've gotten out to different cross-country meets, both to promote our events, but just to support these kids in their effort to compete and be fit and healthy Portlanders and Oregonians. So we're looking forward to seeing some of them in our volunteer roles and in the seats and the stands at the meet when it comes up. This last one is the image of our, our hometown hero, Ashton Eaton, and that will go up on a Wallscape in downtown Portland. We just want to thank you guys as the commission and the city of Portland for all the support that, that we've seen as an organizing committee. We continue to explore other opportunities to touch more lives at this event, and, and we thank you for that support as those things come up as well.
Thank you very much, Sasha.
Coach, I just, I have a, one question. Remind us, how many people are going to come to Portland for this event who are participants or related to the participants?
Well, basically, we think there's going to be probably about 700, 750 to 800 athletes and probably another 1,300 various parts of delegations, so it'll be about 2,000 people and associated with it.
And where are we housing them?
They will be housed at five or six different hotels in the area. The main headquarters will be the Hilton. Both, both Hiltons, that will be the Athlete Village, and we'll use, the Nines will use the Marriott, we'll use the Benson, we'll use the Paramount. Those are the main hotels.
Is there any part of the visiting delegations that we're looking to have Portland families host, or you've got that covered downtown?
I think that what we've done in the past is we have offered that out. The issue's come down to whether or not family, families in Portland would like to do that, not for the athletes, but for any of the spectators or families that could potentially use the help, absolutely, absolutely.
Good idea. Other questions for our organizing team for this effort? Thank you all. It's really exciting, the progress you're making.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. So is there anyone else? I think we have some other folks that are here, going to, here to speak on this item? Yes? Chad is here, so come on up, please. Nope, Chad's not here. Who's here, Doug?
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, just for the second. Okay, so anyone else on this, on this initial ordinance?
I have, oh...
If not, then we...
Public testimony.
Sorry, oh, you do have public testimony, sorry.
I have Donnie McPherson.
Okay, come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
How are you?
Fine, welcome. Thanks for coming. Have a seat.
Thank you.
Tell us what you think about this.
Well, I think it's a great thing. I'm a, a local coach. I've been a world Olympic team coach, not for track and field, but for wrestling for the United States, and, but the first sport I was ever involved in in my life was track and field. I've been an athlete my whole life, and I won't bother to tell you how old I am, but I'm a seasoned gentleman, I'll say. And I just think it's, it's a great opportunity for a lot of our young people. I work, I'm an educator, lifelong educator, and I work at Roosevelt High School right now. And I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for our young people to, to be able to witness these world-class athletes who will be coming here, and we have an opportunity to hopefully build another structure, a, a practice structure, where it'll have a slope to it, where these young, local young athletes will be able to, to get an opportunity to run on a kind of a world-class track and, and be exposed to conditions and, and to be able to experience what it really is truly like to, to world, run on the world stage. So I would just encourage anybody to support this event. It's a wonderful event. It'll bring so many people to Portland, and I've been fortunate to travel all over the world, one of the few Americans been, been able to go to the country of Iran, and so I'm just really excited to be involved, whatever, what small part I can be.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a roll call vote then, please, on 1007.
Novick?
As a former Lane County resident and UVA graduate, I continue to believe that all track and field events should take place in Eugene, but we're luckily accepting that's not so. I'm pretty excited this one's going to be here, and this is a great addition. Hi.
Prince?
Hi.
Fish?
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, all the organizers, and I have a, a sense of how hard you're working behind the scenes to make this happen. And it really, you're going to make it look easy. It is not easy. And Portland applauds your efforts, and I'm proud to support it. Hi.
Hales?
Well, I'm really proud of this, and I'm really pleased with how it's coming together. So thanks to you all. My former chief of staff, Gail Shively, worked with Vin to win this bid, and she will be back wearing appropriate garlands and, you know, regalia to celebrate this accomplishment that you, that you two started for us. The responsibility in our office has been handed off to the capable hands of Diana Nunez, and she's continuing to work with this team of city and Track Town folks that will make this great thing happen. It's a big, complicated enterprise. There's a lot to it. As, as we'll discuss further today, it's all hands on deck in terms of multiple bureaus that, whose cooperation is needed in order to make this happen. But I really like where we're headed. I think this is going to be a great moment for Portland, and I appreciate you all very much. Hi. Okay, we'll take up the next ordinance, which is 1008, please.
Waive Title 33, planning and zoning to allow short-term temporary public use of an indoor track and field facility at 2400 Northwest Front Avenue from December 1, 2015 through February 28, 2016.
Okay, come on up, please, Catherine, and the rest of the team on this one. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Catherine Belmont, Portland City Attorney's Office. The council has seen one ordinance previously concerning this proposed event. In August, you adopted an ordinance waiving certain requirements of the zoning code to allow the track to be completed at a, at a warehouse, Terminal 1, owned by the Bureau of Environmental Services. The ordinance before you will allow the track, once completed, to be used as a, what's called a pop-up track and field facility for youth and collegiate track and field events from December 1st to February 15th of next year. Warehouse, the warehouse is located in a heavy industrial zone. Use of the track as a track and field facility for this interim period of time is classified as community service use, which is allowed in, in industrial zone, but subject to significant restrictions. It's in a greenway zone, there, it's in a planned district. There are other limitations on this proposed use. What you have before you is a very limited time code waiver that is based on both the short-term and temporary nature of the use of this track and field facility use at the warehouse, and is also based on the unique nature of, of the use and the track and championship events giving rise to that use. Kimberly Talent with the Bureau of Development Services can walk you through specifically what this ordinance proposes to waive.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Talent with BDS. I will speak to the specific code section waivers that are included in the ordinance. So as was mentioned previously, the site's heavy industrial with a river industrial overlay zone, so a number of provisions need to be waived. That includes the requirement for a conditional use review to allow community service use in the heavy industrial zone. Also included is the parking and loading requirements that apply to this use, so that improvements do not need to be made to the site. The third item is for waiver of non-conforming upgrades. There's also the waiver of the requirement for a greenway review to allow a non-river, dependent river-related use at the site. And then lastly, a waiver of the development standards that apply to the greenway overlay zone.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Straightforward enough? Okay, thank you both. Now, I believe there are going to be some amendments to deal with here. First, an amendment, I believe, to remove the emergency clause. Is there a motion to that?
Second.
Are we so moved?
Second.
Further discussion of that, so we'll take off the emergency clause, and it will come back for action next week. Roll call on removing the emergency clause?
Novick?
Hi.
Prince?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
You?
Hi. Okay, and then are there, I think, I have some substantive amendments as well, is that right? Do we still need to adopt changes to Finding 5 and Directive D that we have in front of us? Does the council have copies of that? I've got it here in front of me.
No, I don't.
So could we get some more copies of this amendment, please, for the council? Maybe...
I'm sorry, I do. 5 and 6, 5 and Directive D.
I'm sure I have the right one.
Yes, Finding 6, Finding 5 and Directive D.
I do have that, thank you.
Yeah. So these are, these are findings and directives that just, as I understand it, characterize the policy basis for the short-term use of the BES site, and it's still intended that BES is going to sell the site, but since it's not likely that'll happen this winter to lease it to Track Town for use of, for this purpose, is a good short-term... lease it to Track Town for use for this purpose is a good short-term use. So I think Commissioner Fish, you and your office, I think, helped prepare these. Would you like to make the motion to adopt them?
Are we doing, are they one consolidated, or are they...
I think we can do it as a single set of amendments, since we have them both before us. Second?
Second.
Any council questions about these amendments? Okay, so let's vote to accept the amendments, and then we'll take public testimony if there is some.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hale?
Aye. Okay, now, let's hear from the team on this particular element of the project, which is going to be fun and interesting as well.
Hello again, and I feel like each time I come here, I come presenting great new ideas that we need help with. So I'd like to thank the council for its consideration of this ordinance and the unique opportunity that this ordinance will help to facilitate. Track Town USA has contracted for the construction of a brand-new, purpose-built 200-meter track and infield for the World Championships. We are confident this track will be fast and very, very capable of helping the athletes of the world set new personal bests at every level. With the city's assistance and lease of Warehouse 3, we have a fantastic location in which to complete the assembly and finishing of the track prior to its installation in the convention center in late February. As we kind of thought through the logistics and the schedule for the track construction, we realized that there will be a time period between its completion and when we can move to the OCC. While it would be possible to pack the track up and put it back in containers and hold on to it, we realized that the opportunity existed to introduce the youth and other members of the community to the sport of track and field. And to stage actually a limited number of track meets for youth, high schoolers, and all-comers meets, collegiate, track and field, and others. We have quietly discussed this idea within the community, and there has been overwhelming support and excitement for the idea. We have a number of collegiate track and field programs that expressed a strong interest in using the facility for training and for meets. We've talked to the OSAA about the idea of creating a short high-school indoor track and field season. We believe that there are great opportunities to introduce middle schoolers to indoor track through clinics and through various meets. We love the idea of all-comers meets, and even thought about the idea of getting the city council to run against the Monoma County Commission. We've had a bunch of volunteers for that. Or at least, we can put the Portland Police Bureau versus the Portland Fire Department. But truthfully, this is truly a lifetime opportunity to introduce to the youth of our community the fun of running in a world-class indoor track. The very track that will be used by the world's best athletes in the USAs and in the World Championships just a week later. With the approval of this ordinance, Track Town will be in position to secure sponsorship partners and immediately commence the detailed planning and design and programming for the pop-up track facility. Track Town and our group is excited about this unique project. We appreciate the council's support of the idea, and we look forward to revealing the Track Town Track House to the community in December.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Van or this piece? Oh, Vin, don't leave yet. Got a question. Hey, Vin, we've got a question for you. Come back.
What's the plan for dealing with parking and other transportation issues related to fairly significant community service use at this site?
It's a good question, and I think that I would be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, thank Doug Obletz, who has actually put together and worked with the various city staff and the commissioner's staff to work on all of these things. And we feel as though we have a really good plan for it. There's plenty of parking out there, we have an ability to be able to create a safe environment. We will fence off the facility to be sure that there are no difficulties with it. It's actually, it couldn't be a better site to do something like this. There are venues throughout the country and other parts of the country where this takes place, but this would be a unique opportunity for Portland, and we feel we can directly affect those things.
Has the Portland Bureau of Transportation reviewed the transportation management plan?
I believe so.
And what did the neighbors have to say about it, the adjacent businesses?
I don't, I really couldn't answer that question at this point, but I think it's a good question for us to ask, and perhaps Doug can respond to it.
Doug, you got some background on that, please, come on up.
Good afternoon, Doug Obletz, representing Track Town USA. We've been working very closely with the Bureau of Environmental Services on defining the site area that we'll have. At this point, we believe we'll have over three acres of yard area around the warehouse that would be used for parking, some of which may not be usable at certain times of the season because of a little bit of ponding on the area. But plenty of area for parking. It's a relatively low-traffic area out on Front Avenue. We don't anticipate any problems. As far as briefing the neighbors, we have not done so yet, because until today, we don't know if we have this opportunity. But we will be engaging in outreach with the limited number of neighbors that are in the immediate vicinity of the Track House.
It's a site that doesn't have a lot of neighbors in the conventional sense.
It does not.
Right, it does have adjacent businesses, and usually Title 33 and the processes that you go through allow a possibility for neighborhood input or for neighbors' impact, adjacent property owners' impact. So if you could do that before the vote next week, I'd really appreciate it. Because we're essentially waiving people's rights here, as well as facilitating this project going forward. So I'd like to know what the people whose rights are being waived have to say about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good point, thank you. Other questions for either Van or Doug? Thank you both very much. And then I think we have some folks here to speak on this item as well, is that right?
Public testimony?
Yes, please.
We have five people signed up. The first three, please, come on up, are Evan Jaeger, Dion Keaton, and Chad Colwell.
Welcome, come on up.
Hi, thank you for having us.
Good afternoon. How's it going?
Good. So who's on first? Evan?
Yeah, sure, I'll go first. I'll introduce myself. My name is Evan Jaeger. I am a professional track athlete who trains here in Portland, sponsored by Nike for the Bowerman Track Club. I've lived here for the past seven years. And I'm a 2012 Olympian and American record holder in the 3,000-meter steeplechase. Basically, how I feel about the community and the opportunity to have this pop-up track, I think it's a great idea for mainly the youth and also just the general public. I think that when I moved here to Portland seven years ago, I realized that it was a much more active community than I had originally expected. Just with how much it rains and everything, I didn't really think that people would be outside exercising all the time, but I quickly realized that it is a very active community. But I do not think that the general public knows much about track and field. I know that a lot of the youth and high schoolers have a pretty rich understanding of track and field with all the success that the University of Oregon has had over the years. But that being said, we, as professional athletes, don't really get many opportunities to work with the youth or see the youth throughout the year outside of probably the Prefontaine Classic at the University of Oregon. So I think giving the community an opportunity to come out to the pop-up track and really get a sense of what it's like to run indoors and have the opportunity to run a season that they're not used to, I think it would be a really cool opportunity for them, as well as us professionals being able to go to some of those events and reach out to the public and really get to know our small-running community on a more, on a closer basis, I guess. Outside of just being able to interact with the public, I think it would be great for the elite athletes that would hope to be competing at the indoor championships. We don't get many opportunities to race on indoor banked 200-meter tracks here on the West Coast. You pretty much have to travel to New York or Boston to do so. And it would just give us a good opportunity to get used to the feel of the track and what it's like to run on that type of environment and that type of track, and just get used to that and best prepare ourselves for the US Championships and the indoor World Championships.
Can I just say something about Mr. Jaeger? It's Mr. Jaeger, right?
Uh, Jaeger.
Jaeger, excuse me. So Doug Obletz gave me a fact sheet, and we don't often have North American record holders here, so... And I, by the way, just have to share with you my credentials. Thirty years ago, I ran the Turkey Trot, Washington, DC, which is a 5K race on Thanksgiving, and I got an award for finishing it.
Congratulations.
So in my family, that actually was a can for something. So you're the North American record holder in the 3,000-meter steeplechase. You're the 13th fastest performer in the history of this event. And the thing that I just jumped out in the sheet for me was that over 3,000 meters, you have to overcome 28 barriers and seven water jumps. And any one of those can be a hazard that prevents you from finishing the race.
Yes.
So when I was thinking about 3,000 meters, 28 barriers, seven water jumps, it occurs to me that when you retire from the sport, you're perfectly prepared for a life of politics. You spent your life dodging barriers and water jumps.
Yeah.
But anyway, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Great to have you here.
Thank you.
I'd like to be next.
I will. My name is Chad Colwell. I'm the assistant track and field coach at University of Portland. I also work with the Oregon Sports Authority in conjunction with Track Town, hosting, organizing the Track Town Youth League, which was a series of 12 meets across the state of Oregon, had over 1,000 youth participate free. Primary reason was to expose youth athletes to track and field across the state. There are a few coaches here in the room who can talk to the points of what benefits this facility will have throughout the year, specifically for their athletes, track and field at high school, college levels. I also want to address an important issue of what this track in this facility could provide for the youth of Oregon, for Portland, for the Northwest. The legacy component of this track, being the surface, the track that's going to be used at the world indoors, for a kid to be exposed to track and field at that level, it could be something that will stick with them for the rest of their lives. Oregon and Portland is steeped in track and field and running history. The athletes that kind of defined our sport, the Jaegers, Ash and Eaton's, Galen Rupp's, Steve Prefontaine's. This track, the availability for the youth of Oregon and Portland to compete on this track could create a movement which might give us the next Ash and Eaton, the next Galen Rupp. And those people have an influence, and I think they are going to be, as Evan mentioned, eager to be a part of it and to engage the youth of the committee and win these events if they are able to happen, will occur. And I think the legacy component of having this facility will be a huge, huge influence to the youth of Oregon and Portland.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome, good afternoon.
Hi, Dion Keaton here. I'm the youth chair for USATF Oregon, as well as a regional coordinator for USATF for the Pacific Northwest. This is kind of near and dear to my heart, because as of last year, this indoor track is something that I have been trying to spearhead for about the last two years, specifically for the youth committee, our youth community. You know, we compete at a national level and outdoor from the Pacific Northwest. And then when you go to these national meets and we compete against kids from the East Coast, you know, you talk to the coaches, you talk to the other board members from the East Coast, and kind of get ideas of, you know, how they do their training throughout the year and how their kids become so successful for these outdoor seasons. And, you know, 90% of the time, they say, year-round training. You know, they have access to indoor facilities that we don't. And, you know, it just started, you know, to boggle my mind that in the area where we get rain more than 200 days a year, there's not a facility in which we can take advantage of. I know for a fact that the interest is there. We just started an indoor program last year running with Chad through the University of Portland. When we started that season earlier, you know, we had an indoor program for middle school, middle schoolers and older, but there was nothing for kids, you know, 10 or younger. And that is the largest demographic for youth track and field, as far as numbers are concerned. So that's, you know, that's my focus on getting exposure and awareness, not only in Portland metro area, but trying to get that out in Oregon State as a whole. You know, so working with Track Town USA, as well as USATF, to kind of bring, you know, Seattle and Idaho and the Northwest, which is the Spokane Eastern Oregon area, onboard for indoor track growth within Pacific Northwest, is something that, you know, I'm continually working on. And this opportunity here, you know, when Chad, you know, brought it up to me and said, would you speak, I was like, you know, it's a no-brainer, it's something that I'm really passionate about. And, you know, the community as a whole has spoken to me personally about their interest in, you know, having an indoor program and a year-round program for those kids that don't have interest in fall and winter sports, they just want to run. And having that opportunity is something that is great. So, you know, I can't speak highly enough of, you know, having the opportunity to have, you know, the youth specifically run in a facility like this. Not to mention that the tie to the world indoors is there, but just for them to have exposure would be huge to set up for success throughout the year. So that's my piece.
Great, thank you.
I want to thank all three of you for taking the time to come in today and to speak about your own experience with this event and with the sport of athletics. And Mr. Jaeger, my father's, one of my father's best friends in college was Chris Brasher, who won the 1956 steeplechase in Sydney and went on to create the London Marathon.
Wow, that's really cool.
Yeah, so I just really appreciate your coming to tell us of your own experience, and it's wonderful to have a group of talented young people who are dedicating your time and effort to this event.
Thank you.
It's great, and I want to say I really appreciate the spirit of trying to reach out to the youth of the city and get them engaged. I mean, you all have found your calling with track, but you want to share it, and that's really a wonderful thing. And in fact, one of the things that we're proud of as a city this year is that this council approved some additional funding in our budget to make our community centers free and available for teenagers across the city. So Dishman Community Center was free all summer, and now we're expanding that to other parts of the park system. Commissioner Fritz and I were there at the first night when Montavilla Community Center became a free teen center. So there's a whole community effort, and this is really going to fit perfectly with that, to try to get kids engaged in sports and activities and let them know that the adults in the community actually want them to do these things, and we're going to try to make it easy for them. So that's what this will do as well. So it's perfectly in sync with what this council believes and what the community wants us to do more of.
My concern, though, Mary, you just reminded me, I got berated recently in the newspaper for some of our tennis courts are not in their best shape. I'm kind of concerned about the whole pole vault event. I'm anticipating that in March of next year, I'm going to get hundreds of angry emails about the lack of pole vaulting facilities in Portland, and what am I going to do about it?
Ah, well, that'll be a good problem to have.
Yeah, that's a good problem.
Thank you all very much, thanks.
Thank you very much for having us.
For coming. Anyone else that signed up?
We have two more signed up, Doug Nguyen and Jonathan Marcus.
Come on up, please.
My name's Doug Nguyen, I coach at Grant. A few years ago, Mayor Hale, you came to my leadership class.
Hey, it's good to see you again.
I just want to speak, first of all, to note the commitment to youth that you've already shown, not just with your speeches, but with your actions. And what we're here today is a slice of that, focusing on track and field for our youth in Portland. As a coach, that particular sport, kind of swimming and soccer and softball and those kind of sports, this sport is the most diverse. Certainly at Grant and across the school to school, it is the most diverse. Has tons of low-income kids in it, but the thing about track and field, it's so open to different body types that you can be a really little person and still do something great in track and field. There's not that narrow a range of genetics that you have to be to be involved in it and really get, huge benefit of it. I'm sure you know the research about athletics, that fewer pregnancies in high school, drug use, much better academics, especially at Grant. Such a huge difference between kids in sports and those that aren't in terms of that pull. What we're asking for you today is a bridge, because a lot of kids will come to... What we're asking for you today is a bridge, because a lot of kids will come to Grant with lots of fervor and join my cross-country team, they'll join the football team, all these other fall sports, but it's a really tough going for...to make that bridge all the way to spring. There's some winter sports that draw some, but a lot of kids just, they don't have a chance to really play, to play the game of track and field. And it's so wide open. We have a huge team. We have 200 kids at Grant that are doing track and field. We could have even quite a few more kids if we could get that bridge to have that reach more kids. This is a sport that fights child obesity head-on, and it's just really keeping people in shape. And we have a kid at Grant who can long jump 24 feet, and he only can go...there's no way in the winter for an indoor track and field that he has any place to go in the state of Oregon, no way. He always has to go to Boise, he always has to go to Seattle. This would be a golden opportunity for him. But really, I think my emphasis more is on that democratic masses of Portland youth that would really benefit, to be in the game, and you'd be giving him this chance to be participating in that. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Just pulled something up on my phone, because I need to be reminded. So the University of Portland Lady Pilot Soccer Team kicks off its league play tonight.
Yeah.
And I will be there. And the starting midfielder is a young woman named Parks Kendrick.
Yes, on my team. I won the state championship with her.
She won four varsity letters for Grant, won a state championship in track and field, and...
You know your stuff.
Well, it's on my phone.
Wow, I'm impressed.
And her secret weapon, because you mentioned size is not a barrier in track. She is usually the most petite player on the field, but she's the secret weapon for the team, because she can get back the fastest on defense.
Yeah, and she never stops.
You can never beat her.
Yeah. This sport teaches grit, and any of the research, the current research on success in school and staying in school, even getting all the way through the end line at college, is learning to have grit, to overcome adversity. This sport just tackles that head-on, so we really appreciate a chance to play during the winter as well as in the spring.
It also benefits from some passionate coaches, obviously, so thank you.
We are. Both, and Marcus, yeah.
That's great, welcome.
Thank you for having me. I'm Jonathan Marcus. I am the head cross-country and assistant track coach at Clackamas Community College. Most recently, for previous three years, I was the assistant track and cross-country coach at Portland State. Before that, University of Portland, Warren Pacific, and I started out coaching against Doug at Franklin High School in southeast Portland, Go Quakers.
He didn't just start out there. He was a star runner at Franklin when I...I'm old enough to remember him when he was a high school kid at Franklin.
I, for college, went from Franklin back east to New York City and had the joy of experiencing the Armory, which is the fabled indoor facility right there in the heart of Manhattan. The thing that separates, like, indoor track from outdoor track is really the intimacy of the event. You have the spectators and coaches right on top of you. Imagine, you know, the most wild blazer game you ever thought of. That's the Armory every single night for a track meet going on from November all the way to April. You know, that excitement and enthusiasm we have for high-school athletics or for athletics in general, you know, for the playoff football, or playoff soccer, or playoff basketball, but we don't really have that for track and field. You get that at the state meet only, but that's about it. Here's an opportunity to, like, encapsulate that track and field, indoor track and field is a sport that matters to these kids. And, you know, as you guys may or may not be aware, track and field is the number-one participated high-school sport in America, with just under half million girls participating in 2005, just over a half million of boys in 2015. Yet, in the state of Oregon, we only have just under 17,000 athletes. So 7.8 million high-school athletes participate in sports throughout America every year, 15% of that's track and field, but yet of that 1 million student athletes participating in high-school track and field, only 17,000 is coming from the quote-unquote "home" or "hub" of track and field in Oregon. And that's because we miss a lot of opportunities to expose these kids while they're young to the sport. That's why this, you know, highly-dense Portland metro area is very, very critical, because the Armory's model is, there's always activity going on in that indoor track facility, pretty much year-round. A guy who lives here in Portland goes back and helps coordinate the Armory's effort. And when I came from Portland to New York City to participate in collegiate track, indoor track was a foreign phenomenon. I didn't get it, I didn't know what it was, but I immediately fell in love with it. Since then, I put together the Tuesday night, the races all-comer series at University of Portland, which has been going on for six years strong. Now we have 200 people, six Tuesday nights in January and February come to UP and participate in what I call "as much as you can eat track," $5, three races, you can run one, you can run all three, as much as you can eat. And that's kind of working with Dion and Chad, where the idea spurred for the youth under 10 age component. This one's been geared towards eighth grade and over. So there's an immense opportunity here for that engagement, for not only our own state to help increase participation of track and field, but also, too, to help broaden the diversity available, because as a collegiate track coach now for the last several years, that is the number-one sport that you see, especially minority women participating in with the least barriers, too, and the most opportunities of funding. And so the more we can provide those women with that opportunity, I think, the better we can all feel about ourselves, and the more fun we can all have just going to a track meet, eating a hot dog, and watch people run fast, jump far and throw crazy, crazy far. Thanks.
Thank you both. Questions? Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate very much you being here. Looking forward to doing this with you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else that wants to speak? So we have adopted the amendments, and if there are any other questions, we'll move this forward to next week, so...
I do want to clarify that I'd like to know that everybody who would have been notified in any of the processes that we're waiving has been notified at least. I mean, obviously, there won't be enough time for them to respond before next week, but I'd like to make sure that the notice has been given to the right associations and...
So, yeah, good suggestion. Perhaps Bureau Development Services can help the Tracktown USA folks with the list of property owners within the normal perimeter for notice.
Well, Mary, we can also...BES was happy to help because as part of the surplus property disposition process, we had to do public notice. So we'll compare our list with only's list and whoever else's list, and we shouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. I think we have some existing lists, and we'll work with the team to make that happen. Thank you.
Okay, good suggestion. Thank you all very much. This will be on our regular council calendar for a vote next week. Thank you, and we are adjourned.